Broadcasts of the City of Manassia Administration Committee, Board of Public Works, and Common Council Meetings are produced by University Studios of the University of Wisconsin, Fox Valley. Manassia residents and interested parties can obtain information about these meetings and meeting agendas from the city website, www.cityofmanassia-wi.gov. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manassia issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office, (920) 967-3600. Contacting their city aldermen. Contact information appears on the website. Completing the electronic feedback form on the website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited for playback.
Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have the roll, please?
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Sevenik.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Kruger.
Here.
Alderman Tom Grady.
Here.
Alderman Ted Grady.
Here.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda this evening is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak at this time, you could step forward and state your name and address, and we'd be happy to hear from you.
My name is Dwight Kerr, and I live at 434 High Street in Nina. And the reason I'm here tonight is in regards to the routing of the Tressel Trail. Trying to find out, because I've tried with the City of Nina, I haven't been able to get any concrete or solid answers. I'm trying to find out what method we're using to control events and where they go on the Tressel Trail route when they care to use it. Information I get from the City of Nina is we are coordinated with the other cities. I don't know of any process where that's being done. Nobody's been able to give me any kind of an answer, and I'm curious to know what the City of Manassia is doing in that regards. I'm also going to ask the Village of Fox crossings. The City of Nina has a Tressel Trail route going past the official trail going down River Street. They are dragging their feet and stonewalling, I think, the residents on West North Water Street. They're not putting up any signage, and they're letting people go any of which three routes they'd like to go. This Tressel Trail's been in the process for something in the neighborhood of three years, and it's amazing to me that the three communities that are involved in the trail can't, as of two weeks even after the opening of it, have agreed to a way to control the events, the number of, and where they go on the trail. I'm hoping that I could get some sort of answers from City of Manassia, and that's why I'm here today, on behalf of most of, most if not all of the residents of West North Water Street. That's about all I've got.
Well, thank you. Normally, we wouldn't do a question and answer, but we'd be happy to talk with you in the future as well. Give you a quick synopsis of what we're planning on doing. The events would have to be scheduled through all three communities because our common councils would have this rights for the street use permits. So anyone who'd want to do that would have to go through all three if they wanted to use all three legs, and we would control the section within our community itself. As far as the signage, the signage is on order. It should be here in a couple of weeks. I'm not sure what Nina's doing, but we plan on signing our portion of the Tressel, the route that's within the City of Manassia, and some landmarks like the downtown and some of the parks as well at the same time. But if you have further questions, we'd be happy to talk to you after the meeting and/or set up something privately with you. Anyone else this evening? We'll move on to the minutes and communications at this point, then. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we receive minutes A through F and communications G through P.
Second.
There's a motion and a second from Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item G is the consent agenda. There are five items this evening. The minutes to approve from the Common Council Meeting of June 18th. The Administration Committee Recommendations from June 18th. The request to apply for, receive, and spend State Health Assessment Community Dialogue Mini Grant. The recommendations from the Board of Public Works from June 18th for the street use application for Midwest Sun Splash on Friday, July 27th, and Saturday, July 28th, and the payment to Vinton Construction Company for the Main Street Reconstruction Project. Does anyone wish to have any of the items separated this evening? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would ask that we hold five.
Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else, do we have a motion for items 1 through 4? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for your consent agenda items of 1, Common Council, 2, the request for the dialogue, the mini grant, and the remaining Board of Public Works items, which is the Midwest Sun Splash for Friday and Saturday.
There's a motion and a second from Alderman Kruger. Ready? And if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Do we have a motion for item 5? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make the motion to approve the payment to Vinton Construction Company Contract Unit Number 2018-9 for Main Street Reconstruction in the amount of $86,651.40, payment number 4.
There's a motion and a second from Alderman Tom Grady. Is there any discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Is this the final payment yet for the Main Street project?
This is not. We plan on trying to have the final payment for you in two weeks at Board of Public Works.
I had the party on Main Street contact me about that sidewalk issue again over the weekend, and he said he hasn't had any response from City Hall. His calls aren't being answered, so I'm just wondering what we're going to do about that sidewalk issue.
I have not been contacted by any business owners on Main Street.
It was above your level. Mayor?
We did speak to him one afternoon, but that's the last I've heard from him.
Talked to him. Called me over yesterday, and he said his calls aren't being returned or answered, and just wondering what our plan is here to take care of that issue.
Director Radomski and I spoke, and it is constructed to standard construction procedures. If the council wanted something other than that, they would have to direct us to do something different.
He said he's had two concrete companies over, and they say it's not to the standards.
So if someone wants to request we do something different, you could add, put that on the next agenda.
I'd like you to go over with me, and we'll talk to him.
We would bring the concrete people with us. It's not a me thing. I don't know what concrete specifications would be. That's not my expertise, but if you want to go with the director, we could go with the director as well.
He's been trying to contact you, and his calls have been given as of yesterday, and I just want to go over. He's made a big investment in our city, and let's try to make this as smooth as possible.
Like I said, we can go look at it, and if the council directs us to do something else, we can do something else.
Thank you.
Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Alderman Taylor on this point. I do realize it isn't on the agenda, but it is related to the dollar figures. And I have now been contacted by another business, but he says he understands, and he'll probably have to take care of it himself. So he also has this feeling. So now we've got multiple businesses. So I think there is a need for us to work together. We may come up with a solution together. So I think that that would be a good plan. Otherwise, we might have to come in with direction.
Are there further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried 8-0.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for June 21st through 28th. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of June 21st through June 28th, 2018, in the amount of $1,588,923.92.
Okay, I'm not sure who the second was. Alderman Ted Grady. Is there discussion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. John, I might need some help on this because I don't want to prove something, and I don't know if it was in the last time go around or this time, but some work was, additional work was done on the column area where those tablet column pieces were put in with the words "pale," and is there a payment for that or whatever anywhere this time around? Do you know where that might be, Mayor?
We just received the billing late last week, so I doubt it's within.
Okay, thank you, then. Then it's not there. Can you bring that to my attention when it comes up? Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item 2 is the beverage operators license applications. Do we have a motion? Alder, oops. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2017 through 2019 licensing period as listed under approved on the Police Department's memo dated June 27th, 2018.
There's a motion and a second. Did you get, okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item 3 is an outdoor alcohol beverage permit. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the outdoor alcohol beverage permit for July 1st through 2018 to June 30th, 2019, applications for the 2018 through 19 licensing year.
Some motion and a second from Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item 4 is a request from Acre of Art to temporarily install an art piece. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move for a motion to approve Acre of Art's request to temporarily install an art piece at the Plaza Frontin 1, Main Street.
There's a motion and a second from Alderman Tom Grady. We do have Alex Schultz from Sculpture Valley here if anyone has questions for him this evening. Alderman Sevenik?
Procedurally, how did this appear onto the item when it is not an emergency situation?
Well, it would, he has requested that it could be, well, I could let you talk about the installation if we have unanimous consent, and that's why we placed it on there. You have unanimous consent to hear from Alex?
Well, I'd rather hear from you. It's not about his art piece.
The construction timeframe doesn't fit with waiting for another meeting. That's why we put it on there.
As far as what, for him or for us?
For the artist. The artist had requested it to be installed on the 7th and 8th, I believe, and I placed it on the agenda because we could potentially lose the sculpture if we didn't take it up this evening, so if we can't meet their timeline. And I didn't want to take that risk.
I guess we could hear from him, but I just hope this community doesn't think that this is a storage area for this artist because I'm not, no offense, I don't like the piece. I don't think it fits in our downtown. We have a theme here in the downtown, and that's water, and that has nothing to do with it. I don't, I'll allow you, you know, I'll ask for unanimous consent also for you to give me the reason how it fits, but I don't see how it fits.
Alex, did you want to speak a little bit about the project? If you could tell us a little bit about Acre of Art first and then why this sculpture?
Chair, thanks for allowing me to address the council this evening and give you a sense of why it's an urgent situation. Just a little brief history. Acre of Art is in its second year. The first year, we installed nine public sculptures in the City of Appleton. Those sculptures are selected out of 65 entries from a jury of artists, most of them from the Lawrence University staff, but others in the community. This second time around, we had another 65 entries from around the nation. These are people from Colorado, California, New Jersey, Scranton, Pennsylvania. And out of those 65, the jury, and I can give you the names of the people who sat on that jury, but it was, Jan Smith, Tom Grady, the individuals from Lawrence, myself, and other artists. So this is not a simple matter of an individual saying, "I would like to put up a piece of art. This is the piece I'd like to place." So out of those 65, we selected jury's top 15. This piece was actually the first choice of that jury, and that's a jury of seven artists and professionals in the art industry. So for context, that's where that choice was made. So as far as the timing goes, I had met with Department of Public, sorry, the Park and Recs Department probably two or three months ago for the first sit-down. We talked about getting approval process. We went through a number of sites around the city, including the Gilbert Trail and some of the other parks and downtown area. We met about a month after that to sort of finalize what sites might the Common Council or the Park and Rec Department approve. At that point, the Park and Rec Department decided to approve the nine sites that we had visited for potential sculptural placement. The idea was to get probably 15 sculptures this year. Unfortunately, we didn't get that much support, so we're looking at between eight and nine, and I'm still working on those last couple of sponsors. I placed, we placed, I should say, the first piece at the Cut &amp; Run event, which was very well-received. That's at the trailhead of Arrowhead Park, and another piece over in Fritzy Park. That's the beginning of the acre. Those are two of the eight that were, two of the eight or nine that will be placed. So we have seven left to cite. I'm currently looking for homes for those pieces, and when I evaluated the breakdown between what we've already placed in Nina, the one piece that community first is sponsoring for downtown Manassia, and then a few more pieces in Appleton, I felt really strongly that we needed to get another piece in Manassia. And so I had some conversations, and it sort of went down the road with the sponsor who I'm looking to sponsor this piece. Steve Tink from Myron is looking to possibly be the sponsor for this. We're still working on it, and this is the piece he was sort of thinking he would do because it's the jury's choice for this year. Given that there's only one piece right now, I felt we could place it in any one of the already-approved park sites, and I think it would be fine if there's some sense that that's what the city would rather do. But because there are only two pieces coming to Manassia, and I tried very hard to get more than that for this first year, but that's what I have at the moment. And given that, I really wanted some strong sense of acre presence in the downtown area, just like we did last year along College Avenue. We sort of clustered them in the downtown zone. So only having two pieces in Manassia, I felt pretty strongly about having at least two pieces in the most prominent invisible spaces in the city. And that's essentially why I'm pushing. Now, the idea here would be to present the final option on the 10th, and Acre opens on the 20th. Our artists are supposed to be following the timeline of an installation period of the 18th to the 20th, but I have to be very flexible. Some artists can't make that, and if I tell them we don't have any flexibility, we lose the sculpture. So this is a sort of a special case where the artist called me about two weeks ago, said, "I can't be there for the opening. We can wait till September possibly, but if you might, if I can come a few days earlier, maybe on the first or second week of June, I can get, I'm sorry, of July, I can get it in." So that sort of began this conversation about how quickly could we present this and get council approval. So I just, speaking to the nature of the art, art is so subjective, and I get that everyone's going to have a different take, and you're never going to get anyone to love every piece that you place. And of course, this one has, it's a little challenging in its makeup, and I understand that. But I just want to read the artist's statement so maybe you get a little bit different sense of what his work is about or where his head is at, if you'll allow me just a couple more seconds. "My work typically addresses the delicate balance between nature and industry. I create whimsical sculpture using woodworking, foundry, and fabrication skills in conjunction with found objects. I utilize industrial techniques in creating my work, and I find the juxtaposition between content and material learning. Both pieces that I'm submitting for the acre are part of a series exploring concepts of rising and falling, whether it be with civilizations and individuals or ever-changing landscape. These work references past cultures, industrialization, and the earth's ability to sculpt through erosion. Everything's in a state of change. I am often conflicted by the changing nature of things, the tearing down and building up by society, just like the wind, water, and termites, et cetera. We are agents of change by living." So there's something in his mentality that's suggesting change, and I think that is always a metaphor for what we're doing in our cities, trying to find new ways to tear down, preserve, and then put up new stuff. Obviously, we've, you guys are going through those transitions constantly and have seen them in the past few years. So I think it fits in my mind. I get that it may not fit in everyone else's mind. That's what I have.
And I understood that, and I went to the first park board meeting. I think you had missed that one, and there was another artist, and he had some beautiful things that I thought, but they're probably too expensive or something because now he's putting them in Nina, and...
Well, that artist has to raise eight or $90,000 to put it in Nina. And bear in mind that these are temporary works. You might hate it, but you've only been living with it for two years.
How about the piece that's at the end of the, or at the beginning of the new bridge in Nina heading towards Manassia? There's a new sculpture. Was that, which artist was that?
That's Ben Pierce.
Him, the same one?
No, it's a different artist.
Okay.
But that again, that's part of the acre. They're two-year sculpture leases. It's up for two years. If the community loves it or the sponsor loves it and they want to purchase it, we work with them to purchase the art, and they can place it permanently. If no one goes after it and Sculpture Valley doesn't want to purchase it for our collection, the artist comes back and takes it home. So that's the beautiful part of this program is that even for pieces that might disturb some people, you just say, "Hey, relax, people. We get it, may not like it, but it's up there for two years, and then something new is there."
Just so that you understand, I think my council here understands. I might look conservative. I'm probably the most liberal-minded person up here, okay? And when it does come to art, I'm extremely open, but I also care a great deal about my downtown and how it fits and how things fit in it. And I just feel that this is just a piece of art that doesn't necessarily belong in that spot. And I think that that, if we are to put art in this area, in the downtown area, it should relate to our history or the water, which is what this whole downtown is about. So to me, the piece reminds me of Easter Island or something. I just don't get it, and I'm not being that conservative guy who can't handle art. I'm far from that person, trust me. It's just that this piece did not appeal to me whatsoever. So hopefully, the body understands my opinion on that, that I'm not that kind of person, that it's just, I have another view about our downtown and how that piece, I feel, doesn't fit. Let the rest of the body speak.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. A few questions. I mean, I'm more than aligned with Alderman Sevenik, too. I mean, and it's a unique piece, but you mentioned it's, you know, as the artist described it, it's industrial, and that's the first thing I thought right away, too, was industrial, which I thought, hey, that would be great over at the Gilbert Trail or areas like that. When I go into Des Moines, Des Moines has a whole industrial area that has a bunch of these statues in it, and if it's perfect, I'm not overly thrilled about the downtown thing. How was it picked for the downtown compared to any other place? I mean, who made that decision that it would go in front of the Brent Theater instead of like on the Gilbert Trail or something? I mean, how was that picked on the location?
Just some conversations with the jury and understanding, we only had two pieces for Manassia. Essentially, it's, you know, there's a sort of critical mass, three pieces in our mind. If you got three pieces in an area, then you have enough to draw people down. If they're going to start looking at the acre and do the acre tour in Appleton, and there's one piece in Manassia, what is the draw for them to come to downtown Manassia to see that extra piece? Okay? If you have a couple extra pieces in Manassia and a couple pieces in downtown Nina, well, now there's some impetus for those people who are taking the tour of the nine or 10 or 12 pieces in Appleton to go, "Well, there's a few more pieces. Why don't we drive down to Nina, drive down to Manassia, we'll spend a little time down there and see the other pieces." That's essentially what I'm struggling with. I didn't want to find myself in a situation where I only had two pieces installed in these two communities, or two or three, but that's where I'm at. And so for me, it's, I'm trying hard to, you know, have some condensation of the two pieces or three pieces in these two communities. That's it. I mean, I'm certainly willing to place this on Gilbert Trail if that's what, if the council feels strongly that it doesn't fit downtown area. I don't want to force something that, obviously, this is a concern from the aspect of someone who cares deeply about what the downtown communicates to its residents and the visitors. So I'm simply not going to push for something that. But I want you to understand that that's where I'm coming from. It's a matter of condensing so that there's draw to get here. If I put a piece out in Gilbert Trail or Shepherd Park and then just the one piece in downtown, they become so spread out. It's no fault of anybody's, but the fact that I didn't get enough sponsorships to get 15 pieces this year and really put it.
Right, right.
And I would be coming with you four or five pieces to approve, which would be a little bit longer conversation.
Right. And you know, it's just that, you know, along going on the lines of what Alderman Sevenik said, the city's been concentrating on promoting the downtown as waterfront and stuff like that, and that's where I agree with Alderman Sevenik on it. I mean, I think this would work perfectly at the Gilbert site. I just, I don't see it as a downtown one. But my last question is, is on the base, how would the base be built? I mean, if it was installed in front of the Brent Theater, we just...
It's three-leg bolts, three half-inch.
Going into the concrete?
Yeah.
Okay, and once it was removed?
If there's something else in place of it in two years, then it'll go to the top of that location very likely. If not, then we'd put stainless steel, you know, bevel heads over the top of those holes and just dress it up.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just say that the one aspect about putting this piece in that location that was sort of echoing to me was this desire to create an arts district and work on the tower area over there and create some sense of there's going to be this art coming in the future. So breaking away a little bit maybe from the whole, you know, embracing of the waterfront and all about water, there is this notion about an arts district, and I think that can break this out a little bit from that mindset, like we're trying to create this new space, and this would be a great, great way to say, "This is the new space." If you see that thing, you know you're in the arts district. There's no denying. That would be my counterargument, too.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions. The first one is, why would we lose it if we don't make this decision tonight?
Because you're waiting for the artist to come back in two months, and in that period of time, he may not get another offer and decide to put it up somewhere else. These artists do that quite frequently. I had two pieces that were given, or that were submitted for us. We chose them in the jury, and we found out, you know, two or three weeks after they were already selected, oh, we've already put it in another show. So the further, the longer we wait to put these things down and get them installed, the greater the risk that it's going to go somewhere else.
Okay. To start out curiosity, I like the idea. Is there any way that possibly the sculptors could take some information from us to see, you know, could they build something for us that we would come to them and say, "Hey, this is what we'd like," or doesn't it work that way?
Well, it can down the road if that's the track you want to go. That's not this program. I mean, this program is selecting pre-existing works that are, move around the country and selecting them for... selecting them for exhibition. And again, it's two years. So, I, if someone has a question like this about we don't like it or we're worried about the community, I say, "You put it up and you let them sort of digest it, and if they hate it, pull it out."
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Repala.
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
Press anything?
You don't have to press anything, all.
Got it. All right, thank you. I was just wondering, thank you, Mayor. Second piece, do we know what that kind of resembles?
The piece that's sponsored by Community First?
Right.
I can pass that around, actually, if you haven't seen it.
And do we have a location for that?
Yes, it is right in front of the Community First, I guess, or entrance to the left side, probably.
Okay.
It's an interactive piece. I'll pass it around so people can understand what it is.
And that is on Community First property. That's why that's not coming before the board.
Oh. That, the second piece, and that's a good question, what is it, what is it balanced? But it's interactive, looks like a sort of a crosswalk-type sign, but it's a, it's called Stranger Reduction Zone. You walk up to it and press the button, and then it gives you instructions for how to, you know, interact with your neighbors and take photographs and that sort of, it's just sort of a fun, little interactive element that Community First chose to cite there.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alderman Grady.
I don't know if I can talk on this because I was on the jury selection, so does that negate me or?
There is no financial or other interest, so...
Right, okay. There were quite a few, as Alex said, there were quite a few entries that were put in, and it was a group of professionals that picked out this lot of sculptures. I have a hard time with the idea that the sculpture in Manasha has to be, would do, deal with water, since the two sculptures that we do now have in Manasha have nothing to do with water. We have a Plains Indian, and we have a guide from Sacagawea, which is in the Pacific Northwest. So, I don't know what the concept of idea that all things have to relate around water when the water burns right through us. You just have to go look at it. Not every half sculpture has to deal with water. So, and I think this is kind of an interesting, interactive piece that a lot of people, probably kids, would want to get their pictures taken with and stuff, and just add a little element of oomph on that corner. So, that's all.
Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, next time, we have a presentation like this. It'd be nice if we had a, to pull the picture up for the public so they could see it, too. Anytime we just have visuals, it would be nice for the people watching. Alex, thanks very much for thinking of us on this project, and in the future, I just hope you can get more and more and more products for us.
You know, I'm sad. I wanted to bring five sculptures into Nina and Manasha communities and really kind of put this thing, put you guys both on, like, the arts tour.
Fox Cities, I appreciate your organization finally moving the Fox Cities out of the dark ages as far as art, so it's, it's welcome, and, yep, one thing about art, nobody agrees on law, that's for sure, and sometimes it just stirs our gray matter a little bit more, and some like it, some don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Taylor.
Just wanted to add one other comment to what everyone's been talking about a little bit. We saw this great success with The Bizarre After Dark, and I think that what Alex is doing is a little bit like that, trying to bring people to areas that need more visitors. And I see that location as being a very prominent location that has some great potential, but it's kind of unknown and unfound, and this may be a way to bring more attention to that corner as well with that piece. So, I hope that the piece, or whatever piece would eventually go there, would bring that attention and provide some of that oomph for the western end of our downtown. Now, I'm not sure who, I think Becky was next, weren't you?
Thank you. Thank you for the work that your organization does here and throughout the Fox Valley, and regardless of how, you know, our personal feelings about art and where we think it should or shouldn't be placed, I think it's really important to remember that what this organization is doing and what this piece, this sculpture provides is another mechanism to draw people to our downtown, and that helps create economic activity that supports our Main Street businesses.
Sorry, I took your comment. I didn't realize that's what you were going to say. Alderman Taylor.
Thanks, Mayor. Is there a website for the public watching this broadcast? Is there a website for all these sculptures, your organization?
Yeah, so the current season, the two, 2017 through 2019 scene, season is on the front page of our website, which is SculptureValley.com. The current exhibition is walkable on a touring app called Autocast, O-T-O-C-A-S-T. Download it on your iPhone, and if you're in Appleton or Nina or Manash, it's the first tour that's going to show up. And that app has photographs of them in sight. It has a recording of the artists themselves giving the artist's statements, so they give some insight, and you get to hear the artists talk about their works. And then it also shows who the sponsors are. So, there's some recognition for the people that are stepping up in the communities to support the arts, which is an important thing. I can't do this without sponsorship from, you know, community individuals and corporations, so...
So, the first one was SculptureValley.com, and then the app one, I didn't get... Thank you.
Alderman Grady.
I just wanted to elaborate on Alex's. This is the second year also. This is happening also in Milwaukee, where there are twenty-one sculptures that line Wisconsin Avenue, and so it's not new to the state, and it's new to our area, but they're in their second year also. It's a much higher caliber. These are blue-chip, so to speak, artists that are way out of price range, so it's kind of interesting that it's happening here in the valley, too, along with the largest city in Wisconsin, so, and it's a big tourist draw. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no further comments, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call six-two.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Item J is held over business, and I forgot to look at that. What does it say? Okay, so, everything has been paid, and they're recommending approval at this point. Do we have a motion?
I'm sorry, where are we, Mayor?
Alderman Kruger. It's the reserve liquor license for Lake Park Swim and Fit.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the Reserve Class B Liquor License for Lake Park Swim and Fitness LLC, doing business as Lake Park Swim and Fitness, at 7:30 Lake Park Road in Manasha. Megan Collins, agent for the licensing year of 2018 through 19.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, from Alderman Langdon. Is there any discussion? Ready? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please? Yes, that's what I was looking at when I was, I forgot to look earlier. Oops, Steve. Yours apparently didn't take.
Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first is ordinance twelve. Do we have a motion? Alderman Kruger.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve ordinance zero-dash-twelve-dash-eighteen, an ordinance amending Title One, Chapter Two of the Code of Ordinances, issuance of citations introduced by Alderman Nichols, recommended by Administration Committee.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second, by Alderman Langdon. Is there any discussion? I'm not sure if everyone is understanding the process here as well, so I think... Chief Stecker, do you want to explain what the difference between item one and item two is?
Sure, I'm sure the city attorney could explain more as far as procedural perspective, but the first one is as originally proposed, and this is in reference to the ability for the community service officers to be able to issue municipal summonses for various violations in the city code. Based upon the feedback and the discussion that occurred in our last meeting, there was a discussion to narrow down, instead of having the entire traffic code under ten-dash-one, to make sure that later in the future, when maybe none of us are around, that, that authority that the council would like to give the CSOs at this point would be narrowed down to the more specific range of the parking ordinances. So, what has been changed on the proposed substitute amendment is narrowing down that traffic code section of it to include only chapters ten-dash-one-dash, or section ten-dash-one-dash-twenty through ten-dash-one-dash-thirty-eight, which is the parking section of the traffic code.
Thank you, Mayor. As you recall at our last meeting, then, it's more in line with Nina's and deals more with the parking issues. So, I'd like to offer the amendment to ordinance O-12-18 for Title One, Chapter Two of the Code of Ordinances.
So, we're making a motion to amend the original motion to use the substitute amendment?
Exactly.
So, that, that's more or less what you just did.
Yes.
So, is there a second? So, there's a motion, a second. Right now, what we'd be voting on then is the amendment, which makes the ordinance just for the parking portions. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, you have a, yeah, you can, you can take the vote on that one if you want
Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
Yeah, it's a little confusing. I should have started out, I could have just taken up item two, but right...
No, actually, you did it correct. You have to make up the first one first and then add the amendment.
So...
So, now we vote on it as amended.
Yes, so, is there any discussion as amended? Pardon? No?
Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
We won't do that to you again, Steph.
You can't.
Item three is ordinance thirteen relating to parking. Do we have a motion? Alderman Kruger.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve ordinance O-dash-thirteen-dash-eighteen, an ordinance amending Title Ten, Chapter One, Article C of the Code of Ordinances, parking regulations introduced by Alderman Kruger, recommended by Board of Public Works.
There's a motion, a second, by Alderman Langdon. Is there any discussion? Ready? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
Item four. Item four is ordinance fourteen. Do we have a motion? Alderman Kruger.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance O-dash-fourteen-dash-eighteen, an ordinance amending Title Ten, Chapter One, Article C of the Code of Ordinances, parking regulations introduced by Alderman Kruger, recommended by the Board of Public Works.
There's a motion, a second. Did you pick someone? Yeah? Any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on eight-zero.
Mayor.
Yes.
I probably should have brought it up under discussion, but just for the public, all this really was, these past two ordinances, was to clean up the language for parking in the downtown.
One was in the downtown, I'm not sure which one right now, and one was by Geek and School. Item five, Alderman Kruger.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve Resolution R-dash-eighteen-dash-eighteen, a resolution approving a 2018 Capital Approvements Program, CIP, budget adjustment for the purpose of providing the funding for addition of the Broad Street Engineering Design Project, state project in 2018.
There's a motion, a second, by Alderman Langdon. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven-one.
Item L is appointments. We have two appointments to the Housing Authority. At your pleasure, you could take them separately or together. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevanik.
If there's no objection, I'll move for the mayor's appointment of Christine Cap, Cup?
I think it's Cop, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
And Michael Keane to the Housing Authority for the term of seven-twenty-one eighteen to seven-twenty-one two thousand and twenty-three.
There's a motion, a second, by Alderman Grady, Ted Grady. Do we have any further discussion? Do you have a discussion, Stan?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Again, I'm looking at these, these appointments. This is, what, five years?
They are by ordinance, I believe, in this case, or are they by statute for the Housing Authority?
That's my, that would be my question, is, has, was this done by us, or is it required for our grant purposes or whatever? And community development's not here, so...
The attorney said she believes it's by statute. We can find out.
Okay. I just think it's too long.
The RDA appointments are five years, and the Housing Authority is very similar to the RDA, so we can look it up for you and find out for you.
All right, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item O is adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.